Yeah.
Yeah.
The breakdown is usable acres, co-bought of so many acres and then usable acres. So.
Yeah, but see like if you bought lot three.
That's six twelve acres, but it's only four point six one usable. So what do they mean by usable? It doesn't say.
Built, I think I should say buildable and not usable. But you would still downland this.
That's what you can, you can put up a building like cover the four point six one acres even though your, your lot will be six point one two, say on lot three. Your bu- your building can cover that much, four point six one. But you gotta leave a couple acres, not a.
Green acres, I think they would call that.
Yeah.
See here, yeah, here's lot four. It's fifteen acres. Eight, it's four point two usable.
Right. Let's see that. That would also come into play a lot. Drainage, I would assume.
Yeah, I don't know.
What have to.
We'll now call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we, before we start the meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that our meetings observe the Robert's Rules of Order. The public must obtain the permission of the mayor before addressing the city council. Individuals who are noisy or unruly do not have the right to remain in the council chambers and may be removed. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. You what?
Before you do the consent, please come to me.
Are there any questions? Okay.
But finish that motion, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Sarah?
Uh, I just wanna make a note, um, the consent agenda includes amendments to a contract for deed regarding the Herbst land purchase that we did a number of months back regarding a change in acreage. Um, so that is in there. We were down on our server all day today, so it has not been uploaded, but we will get that uploaded onto the city website. A copy is available in the public packet if anybody would like to see those, but we will get those added. They came in kinda late and we just didn't get a chance with our technology issue, so if the council does move them, I just wanna make sure that's aware, everybody's aware in the public of that.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll now have the wastewater regionalization project with Jared Vog from Bolton and Mink.
Good evening, Mayor Council. In closing your package, I'm looking at the number four for the regionalization project. The PS, PS of an amount is nine hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred fifty five dollars and ten cents. That represents approximately thirty-four percent of the total project, um, total. Just by way of update, uh, in terms of the pipe that's been installed, so far approximately five miles of pipes been installed. So that's about thirty-one percent of the overall, approximately sixty miles, so, um, progress continues to go well out there. The last month was focused primarily on making the connections to the, the pipe that's drilled in and the pipe that was open cut. So the contractor was busy with that. They just crossed Highway twenty-three, um, and they'll be continuing to move toward County Road fifteen in town, so, that's kinda where they're at. Lift station work also is progressing well. So they're working on multiple things, but the drillers are in town. They're along Highway twenty-five right now and they plan to stay here until all the drilling is completed, so. With that, um, we are recommending payment to guys on your sons for payment number four, and we're on nine hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred fifty five dollars and ten cents. If you have any questions, let us know.
Does anyone have any questions for Jared?
Project's moving right along. With that, Mr. Mayor, um, I make the motion to approve the pay application for nine hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred fifty five dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
It appears none of the senate or representative candidates have showed up tonight, so we'll move on to the parking and storage ordinance. You should have, everyone should have a copy of that. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we brought this back because I believe that responsible people can do responsible things and sometimes government has a way of, um, over-regulating things. I think by what we have in the packet now, responsible people will be able to keep everything neat, keep the lawn mowed and the ones that don't want to do, to keep up with the ordinance, well, they'll pay the fine.
Yeah, I read through the whole thing and it looked pretty good. I thought it was, it'll, it'll go.
Let's give it back to the people.
Subdivision four, from what I understand, you can park a trailer on the grass.
Yep.
Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, providing you keep it mowed and everything else, yep. Sarah?
Um, and it should be on the grass on the side or rear yard?
Yeah, not in front, not in front, on the side, yep. Side, rear, whatever, correct.
Yep. Do we have anything else? Anybody else have anything to say?
I'll make the motion to approve the revision on section ten thirty.
I will, do we have a second? I will second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now move on to the open forum. All those wishing. We have one. Deborah, if you can come up to the podium, state your name and address and we have a limit of two minutes per speaker.
Hello, my name is Deborah Olson and I'm at six hundred Dewey Street. Uh, I had requested to be placed on tonight's agenda to discuss the Robert's Rules of Order. And the reply that I received from our city administrator, you have a copy that I provided to you. Um, and she outlined various different things. And I guess I presume that we lived in a democratic society where one of our fundamental rights is freedom of speech. But according to our city administrator, the city council wants its citizens of Foley to be seen but not heard. And to Robert's Rules of Order has guidelines for clarifications and questions. And yes, it means raising your hand and being acknowledged by our mayor to ask for clarifications and questions. Your first page I provided to you, uh, your guide, simplified guiding principles. Uh, and, and then on the backside, it does have some generalized, uh, suggestions. But by our mayor's prior responses to someone raising their hand, it's been told that this isn't the time for an open discussion, but when is the time? Our citizens do have questions. And the secret society of our city council does not make their actions or dis- decisions transparent until after the fact. And then our benevolent citizens of Foley are to accept their decisions without question. And isn't there something similar happening between Ukraine and Russia? Other countries have had this similar thing. And since the city administrator keeps referring to the mayor's handbook, one of the easiest ways mayors can promote citizen involvement is by modeling compliance with the open meeting laws and other laws aimed at soliciting public input. To afford the public an opportunity to send its views to the public body. Public comment period or, or open forum is outlined in the handbook. Actually, speakers are allowed up to three minutes for comments, not the two that the city of Foley has made, um, their limitation. So I would like you to keep in mind, yes, people may have questions, they may raise their hand. And again, with Robert's Rules of Order, you can preside over the city council and keep it limited and justified, but please listen to your citizens once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I do not have much for you tonight. Uh, you did receive the stat report for the month of September. We had a total of three hundred and sixty-six calls for service, driving conduct, um, lot of stop sign violations. That is included in that. Um, people driving without a valid driver's license, that's that D R, D A R S or C. Um, child calls are up because we had a full month of school. And parking tickets, reminder to citizens that downtown, it's thirty-minute parking all year round. And now starting November first is winter parking where there's no parking on the city streets, on any city streets, from two AM to six AM. And we will be putting a reminder in the paper on our social media websites. And the officers also have, the front office helped out and printed out warning tickets that we're gonna be putting on the cars the last week of October, just letting people know. Um, and lockouts were up for the month of September. So other than that, events coming up, um, we just have our Halloween safety that I do at the school every year. I'm doing that on Halloween Day. Um, yeah, we've been busy, so. I do have the postboard audit coming October twentieth, um, to come and make sure that we are all, it's every five years that they come out, so, we're due. All right, other than that, that is all I have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for her? We'll then move on to City Engineer, Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. Um, tonight I just have a couple of updates for you, uh, the first being the twenty-three project. Um, since our last meeting, we have opened up Broadway Avenue, um, and the trap, the bypass on the north side of the road have been removed and local traffic has been shifted to the south side. Um, I was saying, other than the first day, that's, that switch went over pretty well. Um, in town here, they are currently wrapped between Broadway and Eighth. They are currently wrapping up all the storm sewer and drain tile, um, and doing all the ditch kinda cleanups. Um, end of the week, we should be, based on last week's schedule, we should be looking at curb between Broadway and Eighth this week, at the, at the end of the week. And then the early next week, the realignment of the thirty-six inch storm sewer between Eighth and Ninth. The city had to do with the, with the proposed storm sewer underneath the highway now. Um, that should be happening early next week. Got any questions on the twenty-three project?
Is it curb on both sides or just one side?
Curb on both sides, yep.
How's your supplies? Are they waiting for anything yet?
Uh, the only thing that we are waiting on or that is gonna be pushed till, it looks like next year would be that box over we discussed that last meeting. Everything else should still be coming along. Um, yeah, that should be, that's the only thing I've heard of anyway, yeah.
What's the, uh, position on the sidewalks?
As in if they're gonna get done this year or?
Yeah, are they gonna be finished this year?
Right now, everything except for that box over area should be finished this year.
If it's too late, is that recommended?
Should be. Uh, obviously, the, you know, weather's gonna play a, a big role in that. Uh, if we get what we hoped for, that shouldn't be an issue, but if it does get too cold, that sidewalk will probably be the chance that could be pushed to next year, along, along with that trail. Grading for that trail should get done this year for sure, though. But as of now, both of those are still planned for this year. Any other questions? No. Um, the other update I have is the industrial park wetlands. Uh, we submitted the donation port, uh, report to the county, uh, on the twentieth of September. They have until the thirteenth of October to reply or, you know, to provide any comments. With the discussions we've had with them up to the twentieth, we don't anticipate any comments, um, but they have until the, until the thirteenth to provide those comments. Any questions on the wetland donation report in the industrial park?
So as far as which concept would we go with or just wait and see who buys first?
Uh, both of those concepts are still in play. Um, we were gonna be discussing that in our staff level to which one to move forward with. That the split itself that, uh, was agreed upon earlier in the consent agenda, that split keeps both concepts still viable as well.
Anyone have any other questions for him?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to Public Works and Fire Department, Mark Pattonfuss.
Mayor, City Council, I'll keep it short, too. Um, I don't think I mentioned last month the sweeper we ordered did arrive. The one we purchased used from a queen. That appears to be a very nice cleaning machine, so using that this fall. Um, I'd imagine we'd start, we've been doing a lot of jetting. We're gonna do aggressive jetting, I mean, we haven't done much for the last two years since we didn't have a truck at work. Um, we've probably done three weeks now already of two guys all day and we're gonna keep two or three more weeks for sure, for sure, too. Flushing, we're gonna try to keep that. With the spring, we never got done with everything, so we're gonna try to make it all through town. So that's what they'll be doing the next, their October is done. And, uh, locate after locate after locate. Uh, for those that are out and about, some of the, the overlays got done, the trail got done yesterday. Um, the tennis court in Holdridge, and we did summon lions. We had to do that road in there before we peeled it and quit, you know, we did that. We didn't do the tennis court there. Um, so that's what we've been up to, I guess. Any questions? We have open house Saturday for fires. There has it on the list there, so eleven o'clock. I'm gonna hot dog and a pumpkin and.
Buy some tickets.
A few left, not many.
Do you, so do you guys stripe the tennis courts or you get that hired out?
I don't know. Now it looks nice. I wonder if we should. I don't know yet, no. We did the last time.
Last time I asked.
Yeah, oh, I thought, are we gonna now?
No.
Yeah, it won't be till spring.
No, no, I just didn't know if that's something you guys hired out or did it yourself.
We can figure it. It couldn't be that hard. It's not like this is a professional court. It's got a slope too. Yeah, no, we did it on it last time.
Okay.
If, if we, when we paint those tennis courts, is it possible to, huh?
Those are basketball we did, man.
Oh, but.
You're talking, talking about pickleball?
Yeah.
We've been having discussions here. I've been trying to get some.
You did the.
Did the basketball court, not the.
Basketball.
You said tennis. That's why I was confused. Okay, now I got you.
Are you sure?
Yep.
I wouldn't ask about tennis to.
We did the, we did the basketball and lions in, in Holdridge and we did the road into the, the what was left of that other one, 'cause it was so shot.
Okay.
So.
Cause we had talked, if you're gonna do the tennis, you're gonna tear it all down.
Some funding if we can, um, for maybe, or maybe next year, and then we would do a pickleball court at that time.
Yeah, cause.
But we need a, uh, sponsor, I guess I'll say.
Need some help.
It's spending. Yeah. I mean, we're talking, we're not talking twenty thousand dollars.
Think you're talking six figures.
Close. Yeah, I'd say between eighty and a hundred, you'll be, the time you fence it and everything, so.
For pickleball?
Oh, tennis court and everything.
Tennis court.
Yeah, that's why that one keeps getting pushed, but it's. Other than that, I don't know if I have anything for you.
Does anyone have any other questions for him? Okay, we will move on to Administration with Sarah Brun.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Council, first thing, I was hoping to have, um, more information on health insurance numbers, but I didn't get them yet this week. We're supposed to get them soon. I do know, I think the counties this, today was about fourteen percent. But what I was told by our insurance, um, providers or rep is that, um, they're very reflective of, uh, inflation. So I would expect we're gonna get a double-digit something, just because that's what we're seeing in everything else. But I will keep you posted once I have something on that. Um, the only other thing is if there's any other items related to the budget that you wanna discuss, um, you know, let me know. Um, if we need to do a little bit more research on any item, um, we're happy to do that. Just let us know. Um, the tax statements will go out later than for the public, based on what we certified in the preliminary levy, but that can always be lowered. That is always the, uh, situation. Um, other item I wanted to bring up was, was the fee schedule related item, and that's the water sewer minimum. Um, we had done this spreadsheet a while ago and I just kinda wanted to show you what we're talking about as far as the, um, minimums when we come to like our multi-unit dwellings. It's very common to charge each unit a minimum, so we just ran some rough numbers and these are on our existing rates on the potential impact of just adding minimums based on the units. That doesn't necessarily mean we would stay with the, um, same number of gallons for each apart, for each unit, but it, even if you did treat each unit like a separate housing unit, you'd still have some revenue that, um, could be gained there. And this is based on old rates, so obviously any increases would result in more revenue. Um, so what my plan is, we will, um, send letters to these property owners notifying them of the change. And then when we adopt the full fee schedule, um, which is usually done in November or December, we'll approve any changes to the rate structure at that time. But do you have any questions? Does this make sense to you? We kinda ran it the old way or the new way versus you can see what the base charges on each unit actually due to the overall bill. And so what we're saying is if you have, you know, twenty two-bedroom apartment units, all twenty of those are charged that minimum, which is now like forty-nine oh six. They're all charged that, um, so forty-nine oh six times twenty plus then the gallons that they use, that they get with that charge. So there is some revenue that we can gain and I think that is an equitable way to do it. It's very common. We'll get some more examples and, and we'll find a way that works best, but, um, if you're okay with that, I'll move ahead with, with letters and, um, we'll bring it back with the full fee schedule then.
So is there a meter on each individual unit in these apartments?
No, you would set basically a base charge of the, um, based on the number of units. So instead of like your base charge being forty-nine oh six, theirs would be, you know, four thousand, whatever, whatever it would work out to be. And then they would be metered on the gallon, so they'd get an overall gallons based on the building itself. But we're gonna make sure we at least charge each unit that minimum, because right now some of those apartment units are actually getting away with less than minimum the way this calculates out, because they're treated as one big complex. So there would still be only the, the two, the, the high-low or the one-meter system on the building.
That's if the, all units are full.
Right.
That everything's rented out. If it's not rented out.
I'd still keep it as a unit because of an available unit. It, basically what you're doing is you're charging multifamily dwelling you, dwelling units a higher base charge. Is maybe the better way to look at it, because they have multiple little units within them. And this was based off a recommendation from Minnesota Real Water, that it's a practice that is common in most other cities that we should probably consider.
So you're gonna notify the apartments? Are you gonna bring, um, do we need to have, uh, a motion and a change in the ordinance or?
That will come with the overall fee schedule.
And when is that coming?
That comes in November or December. We always, we always adopt that at the end of the year.
Okay.
So you know how we're in the fee schedule during the budget discussions, there was some water sewer rates? Yeah, we would make some notes um, within the fee schedule, and there's a public hearing with the fee schedule.
Okay, so when will that be ready?
Well, I'm hoping by November, but otherwise it'll be ready in December at the latest, because we will wanna get that in place before the first of the year.
And when would we start charging the new rate?
First of the year.
Okay.
So they, the first bill they would see would be the February bill, because they'd obviously have the usage in January.
Okay.
So now with the gardens, that's the rooms, is there another meter for whatever water usage they use? Cause it can't all just be used for the apartments. I mean, they have to have some other staff.
There's a couple meters, isn't there, and the, don't the?
Each building has their own only.
Just the building itself?
It would be a nightmare to try to plum all separate meters, yeah.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I didn't know how many meters were involved here in each, and something like that, because I'm just thinking in my head.
Are you asking if there's like a separate rate for the common areas?
Right, but it's not. It's all the same.
Well, so you're just charging per unit?
See, you're still gonna bill the one entity, the property owner. How the property owner wants to bill that into the lease, that's their choice. Everybody does it a little different, you know. They may do the actual, some may just say you're paying a hundred dollars a month, whatever it is.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have anything else unless you have questions for me. I mean, we're getting ready for elections and, you know.
Were you talking to Trailer Park Two on this with the apartments or?
Yeah, um, we don't, yeah, the Trailer Parks Two, they, they're all one meter as well. They have their individual services. I don't think they're on this list, but we did consider them.
So they're all to be included?
Yeah.
Okay.
This was just our list when we were, when we were looking at it with Minnesota Real Water. We were trying to get an idea of the impact. Um, because, uh, it, it's important to understand what kind of revenue we could generate. We don't wanna overstate that either. We need to make sure we can meet our commitments and so forth.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions for Sarah? Thank you. We'll now move on to any old business. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure we all got a copy of this from Northland Reliability Project.
Yes.
I will be attending that, um, looking at probably the October eighteenth.
I'll, I'll post that as a possible quorum, just so we're covered.
Okay. Uh, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, it was brought to my attention by some people that, uh, we as a council, do we want to talk to the county about making, um, Fourth and Dewey a four-way stop? Uh, some of the people around there would say that it was nice that the traffic was slowing down for the stop signs. But I told them, I said, that is a county road and that'd be up to them. Do we want to bring that to them or?
Has that been requested before and denied?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah.
Has it?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I think.
How, how, how about Norman out by the school?
Yeah.
That's forty-five miles an hour coming from the end of the, uh, football courts until you get down to, I believe, uh, the church down there, it drops down.
Yep.
That's, that's a county state aid road too.
Yeah.
That should be schools, school zone speed limit.
Yeah, we, we have talked about the school zone, um, it's, first of all, it's a county state aid road, so we'd have to coordinate with them. But, um, the school zone, there's a study, there's a process we need to follow, and that's certainly something to look at it. But, um, it's not something you can just post a sign and change, you have to go through a number of steps to designate that. Um, and I know we did look at it one time, it was a few years back, and the cost and process was something that was of concern at the time.
You're talking County Road forty-three?
I think that's what he's talking about, yeah.
Well, that's not a state aid road.
It's a county road.
It's a county road.
It's all county, all the way to, okay.
The only, the blue signs are state aid.
Okay. So what, I don't even know then, is it, if it's a potential, I, I don't know how that works on a county road.
I, I'm concerned about speeds in town, I know we've had, um, speeding tickets. But it seems like, I mean, on Cottage Grove, they're running through their much more than thirty miles an hour. And I know Saint Paul is considering making the speed limit in residential areas twenty miles an hour. So forty-five just seems way out of line. And I do think with our angle parking, I think Dewey and Fourth, I was quite relieved when there was a four-way stop. I found it nice to have, because people fly down Dewey. And you know, people from the Dewey Street Apartments are going over to the post office and the courthouse, you know, there's a lot of reasons to slow down traffic on Dewey. So I would be in favor of your proposal.
Well, it'd be up to the county.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, not Dewey Street, is it?
Yeah.
The whole, that's the whole county route?
Yep.
Didn't we, Katie, didn't we do a, I thought there was a study done on that and they said that it didn't warrant the four-way stop.
My guess is there's not enough traffic, not as a traffic study.
That's when they did the parallel parking, I think that's when they did the study on that, when they formed the traffic.
How long ago was it?
Sixteen, fifteen.
Fifteen, no.
I'm sorry? So six, seven years?
Two thousand six fifteen probably for a two thousand sixteen project, I would take it as.
Once all these roads get back opened up, you're going to see substantially less traffic on all these roads again, then, so I mean.
That's true.
You go on County Road four now and it's chaos out there till this gets, projects get done, because of all the detours.
That was brought up to me, so.
So I guess what we could do is just lower the speed limit in town, right? And the county would have to comply with the speed limit, maybe not a stop sign.
I don't think we have that, right, don't they determine the speed limits? Mark?
There's a process.
I want to.
You gotta go study and everything, you don't just lower speed.
Yeah, you can't just.
Same way with the county, we got to go through that process with the county as far as.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It's technically their road.
Mark?
Oh, Mark. Me again. Uh, I, I, I'm always putting stuff off, but my take is, being we're, our county engineers moving on the end of the month to a new position in the private sector, when we get a new one in next summer, we talked about this. It's unfortunate we can't do it right away, but Chris is not going to touch it right now, obviously. And it's going to take, what, how many months to get a new engineer in up there, so. You might have one at Ra-Ra, or you might have one at, by the, you know. I mean, I hate to, you know, that's not an answer for you.
No, but.
We're gone, Mr. Gennett, but I don't think nothing's going to happen.
Right.
Soon.
Well, I know it's a process, but it seems like it's a question of public safety. We've got a lot of old people in town, we got a lot of business in town. Um, I, it seems like cars are going faster, I don't know why that is, but I walk a lot and it's pretty scary crossing some of these streets.
It's on the driver.
Well, when you're the little person walking across the street and the SUV can't even see you, it's pretty scary how fast they're going.
It's the responsibility of the driver, though, whether they speed or not. You can lower the speed limits, is it going to help? It might, but still, the responsibility is on the driver.
People are going to, people are going to drive the way they want to drive, and speed limit signs don't mean anything to them anyway.
Well, I, I think Highway twenty-three is kind of a road quieting project, and there are things like that that you can do on any street. So maybe we should look carefully at how twenty-three is after it opens up. Because they did things there that are called road quieting, which was the curbs and the center turn lane and the roundabout. So.
That's an idea.
I mean, we, we should actively look and see if that helps and it, you know, there's roundabouts and residential intersections.
Dewey and Fourth, you do a roundabout.
What?
Roundabout at Dewey and Fourth.
Well, they took our roundabout away at Cottage Grove and I miss it.
Deborah?
But then also, um, Dewey and Sixth is the other one that would benefit from the roundabout.
Oh, with the church and the courthouse and, yeah. You're right, but, and that's almost, that's really a school with zone also.
Yes, it is because of the Catholic school.
Yeah.
Five o'clock, people going fifty miles an hour.
I believe them.
I'm no engineer, but a roundabout will not fit in town anywhere, I can guarantee you that.
You'd, you'd have to move your house.
Everyone would be very upset, so.
I have seen them in Saint Paul, and they like just put an urn in the center of the street. I mean, the ra, the circle is this big, but with flashing lights and signs. And they don't have lanes, they don't have curbs, they, you know, it's pretty cheap proposition.
No, no proposition is cheap.
Well, no, not.
I think it's just food for thought.
Later on down the road.
Okay, well.
Any other new business? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Good meeting. That was fast, look at that, ten after six, five after six.